To the October 7th West Des Moines City Council Meeting, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please sign in. Ryan, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Your Honor.
Move approval of the agenda as distributed.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Item two is Citizens Forum, which is the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the City Council on any item that's not part of public hearings, item six, or new business, item seven.
Come forward.
It's nothing under item six or seven?
What's the item?
No, it's not. It's not. I know. Mr. Newquist, stand at the podium.
Go ahead.
While you're in still the south trying to see.
Okay.
Try to get to them.
Yeah, if you would come up to the podium and share your name and your address, okay, that's fine. Yeah, thank you.
My name's Don Newquist, address?
That's the microphone.
Forty-two oh-four Commerce Drive, West Des Moines. We have complained against the city and their water. Their water's been coming down through our house and through our garage, and our garage has dropped that much. And our, when it rained the other day, the last time it rained, two, three days ago, we had that much water in our bedroom. And it's coming down, and the city officials, Mr., the city attorney, he was gonna help us, but then the last day that I called him, he said, "Call me after five o'clock." So that was in. They didn't, they don't want to do nothing for us. Anyway, the city doesn't want to do nothing for us. And what we have is we have a terrible problem. We have water. I could show you a video of the water. I could show you a video of our, inside of our house, what, two, three days ago, whenever it was that we had that rain. And it's perpetuated and got worse each time there's a rain. When we moved in four years ago, there was no problem. There was this, there was an eight-inch pipe that took the water across and down to our backyard. Now, half of the city's roads from Upper Commerce Drive and Commerce Drive and, Upper Commerce Drive and High Street, we have, we have that much gravel and rock and all their streets is down in our yard. Our backyard, we can't use no more because there's so much rock down there from the, the city attorney's seen all this. He's, he's seen, you can ask him a question if this ain't true. It's a terrible thing. I'd like to show you a video of the water pouring down there. It's, it's, since we moved in, there's, the West Des Moines has closed, there's two culverts that used to go from Upper Commerce Drive underneath and down to the river. Well, they ain't going no more. Both of them have been, one of them is, is just plugged, and the other one, the city, one of the, one of the upper city employees with the, with the road grader ruined it. And I just found out, I don't know if Don, if other, there was supposed to be a bunch of people here, but they didn't show up. So that's, that's our, that's our gripe. We have a terrible, I'd like you to see, the, the video is, it's overwhelming how much water is coming through. It's ruined our garage, our garage has dropped that much. And now there's water in our house every day, every day, every day that it rains, every day that it rains. And she has to get down on the floor and clean it. She, we can't have carpet in our bedroom because the water comes down and ruins it. So she had to strip a carpet across from one side of the bedroom to the other, so she'd come in the bedroom, walk on the carpet, get in bed. But I had to cut it out the other day, cut it up, put it in the garbage, just the other day, after this rain that we had last week. You'd think it was a terrible rain, it wasn't. It was some normal rain. Since the city has closed, let closed, view the two of the culverts, and all kinds of houses has built. In nineteen seventy-nine and eighty, we lived, we had eleven acres at the end of that road. So we went over that every day. There was no problem whatsoever. Now, if there's a rain, there's a creek. It's Commerce Creek, and it comes down through our yard, the, the, two of the culverts are closed, and they don't want to do nothing. The city don't want to do nothing about it. And so we're, we're in devastation. We're in, every day, she went out and, I told her not to clean up, we got that much sand and rock from the Upper Commerce Drive, the Commerce Drive and High Street. It comes down through the culvert, there's, there's this much in our backyard. I can't even mow anymore because there's so much that my mower gets stuck down there in the back. But she went out, I told her not to do it. She went out there and cleaned the, our sidewalk, so she could walk on the sidewalk. And there's that much rock and sand and dirt and gravel and crap and everything you can imagine on the, so she went out there and, so she was in the hospital three times in the last month because she hurt her hip or she hurt her whatever. So it's just, it's a terrible thing, and the city of West Des Moines don't want to do nothing. All they want to do is take nine bucks from every person that has water with the city of West Des Moines, and then the city gets the money and it's for water control, what do you call it? Flood control. But they don't control nothing. The wat, there's not anything, the only control they do is, there is no control. The water flows across, they built twelve new houses this year, and the guy told us, we said, "Well, the water's coming down from those twelve new houses." "Oh, no, no, it goes through the back." We lied like a rug. The water comes right across the road, we have video of water coming across the road and down. It just flows from, like, how many houses you guys reckon are up there? Forty, fifty? How many houses are up there on High Street?
Thirty.
Thirty, forty? Anyway, there's twelve since last year, new ones. And the water comes down, Dick had seen everything. He come out and looked at everything. He knows that this is honest God truth, that we ain't lying, we ain't trying to get nothing from the city. All we want is you guys to take the water that belongs to you, you get paid to take care of it, and you ain't.
Tom, can we, can we get Public Works to look into this and see what?
They've looked and looked, we've talked to everyone. They've, they were condescending and rude to Rita. She said, "Look at, do you, would you, how, how did you, go Rita, how did you, that guy was condescending and rude to you?"
We have a road that goes down to the back, and I said, "Well, maybe it could go on past our house and garage and go down there somehow. We could control it somehow." And he said, "Well, you wouldn't want to do that to your neighbor." And I joked him, he said, "Well, it wouldn't hurt for him to have a little bit of it." And, but there's not been-
They laughed.
-answers, I mean, not answers, but there's not been any-
They think we're, it's, it's a, it's a waste pile. If you guys would come out, I invite you, anytime y'all get my number, and anytime y'all want, anyone wants to come out, I'd be happy to show you, and we ain't trying to lie. All we want them, want them to do is take those, that water from them forty houses up there, or whatever it is, and just put it through a culvert and take it down to the river. Our backyard's the river.
Okay, Mr. Newquist, this is the first I've heard of this. This is the first we've heard about it. So we're gonna ask Tom Haddon, our city manager, to get his arms around this issue and recommend or advise us on what should be, what we should be doing. So I guess, Dick, it sounds like you've been out there.
Yeah, Mr. Newquist is absolutely right. It's a very bad situation, and it has been ongoing for quite a while. The problem is that they are at the lowest point in commerce, and so all the water tends to drain right through there. There was an eight-inch pipe that they had running between their garage and their house. They've made a complaint, we've had it investigated, ICAP actually sent out an investigator, George Capps, and I know Mr. Newquist is not happy with the results of that, but basically, he said it was built to standard at the time it was built, back in the thirties or forties, and therefore, even though there's more water coming down, it's, it's built to the way that it should have been at the time. And that's why the city, or ICAP on behalf of the city, has said there's no liability on the part of the city.
But are these two other culverts, are they plugged?
Well, the culvert, and Ben can speak to this, the Public Works has been out there engineering, and maybe Ben can't speak to it, somebody can.
But I don't want to have a full-
Yeah, no.
But all I'm saying is-
Sir.
I might just say, Mr. Newquist, we have been through this, and so it's a matter of, are we liable or are we not? And we've determined, basically, on what we've investigated, it's not the city's liability. So we could go back through the whole thing again, or we could, you know, we have to address it in some manner, but going back and doing the whole thing over again really isn't gonna get any different, I don't believe. It's, it's just a matter of, there is a railroad culvert that's plugged on the north side, but it kind of maintains water.
He can't hear. You want to get both?
I hear, I hear.
Okay.
There are some issues that can be addressed that I think that Mr. Newquist has pointed out, but I don't know that it was actually gonna solve the problem that he's looking at. And unfortunately, it's kind of a situation where you're at the low point out there. The culverts that were installed back at the time when they were put in addressed the problem at the time, they don't seem to be addressing it now. So it's a question of who's liable, and the city's maintained that it was built to standards at the time, and therefore, there's no further liability. You're of a different opinion, so-
It was never built-
To rehash the whole thing again, I think we've, we've got to address it in some-
It was never built for the city of West Des Moines. The city of West Des Moines has never taken care of their water. This water, the, the culvert was built for the railroad, only for the railroad, the tracks go through there. The culvert was built to take the water from the side of the tracks and take it down to the river. Well, then the city, when we lived at the end of the road, in nineteen seventy-nine and eighty, was it? And there was no problem whatsoever, but there has been twenty, thirty, there was twelve houses built last year. Every time there's another house built, when we moved in there four years ago where we live, there was no problem. There was a ten, eight, ten-inch pipe that took the water across and down to the back of our yard and down to the river. Well, now it takes a three-foot, a five-foot, a four-foot, what's coming out, it comes out-
There's a lot of problem every time it rains.
There's so much water coming out now, there's ten times as much water. There are two cul, he wasn't telling the truth. There's two culverts that are closed. And one of them was closed by one of the better employees of West Des Moines that took a road grader out there and went over it. Is that right? Is that right?
Mr. Newquist? Give us, give us a chance to investigate this. Talk with our Public Works Department and our staff, and we'll get back with you, but to just keep rehashing. We understand what you're saying.
These two gentlemen here, they know, they are having problems too, also. These, this guy, this guy, and him.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna-
I look into it.
Mr. Newquist, we're gonna ask the city manager to look into this and get a report back to the Public Works Subcommittee, of which we have two council people, and let them come back with a recommendation on what steps the, the city should consider doing as, as the city. Tom's, Tom's good at dealing with stormwater issues, we're dealing with them all over the city. So this is the first we've heard about it as elected officials.
I want to make sure you understand what Dick is saying. Dick is saying, from a legal perspective, there's nothing more he can do. From a policy perspective, it sounds like there's nothing, Public Works. But you're talking to the right people, you're talking to the elected officials who can override that if we so choose.
I see, I see.
So that's all we're saying, is give us a chance-
Let us look at it.
-to look at this and to see what's going on.
Well, the way they have it-
Yeah, that's good.
The way they sent this old guy out, he could only get out of his car and walk two feet, three feet, and that was it. And he's the one, George Capps, if y'all know him, if anybody knows him, George Capps, anyways-
Mr. Newquist, he's related to the insurance company.
They listen to what he says.
Yes.
We're gonna ask the city manager to take a look at it.
Right.
And then we'll, we'll all get back involved after they have a chance to-
This gentleman, this gentleman, and this gentleman, and Rita, all have things to say, just like I did, different things.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna ask Tom to meet with you. This isn't gonna be an hour tonight, these are five-minute issues for-
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna ask Tom to investigate it, which means he can talk to all of you guys, we'll get all the information, and then it'll go through the Public Works Council Subcommittee, and there'll be a recommendation made to all the council on what steps, if any, to be taken down there. So that's the process it needs to go through.
Yes, sir.
And we can't finalize it tonight.
Did you give this guy five minutes and this guy?
If they've got something else, if they've got something new to say-
Yes, they have more to say than me.
Something new to say.
He has something I just found out today that's very extraordinary about this situation.
Go ahead.
He has things to say.
But as long, as long as it's new information-
Yes, sir.
But to rehash the same stuff-
Different.
Okay.
He is, it is new stuff.
All right, let's keep it to five minutes, because we're gonna spend a lot of time investigating it on their end, so that we can-
And I understand that.
So share your name and your address.
My name is Richard Adams, address forty-five ten Commerce Drive. As he said, it is a shame, the water does run between his house and his garage. Looks like there's either need to be a culvert there, or, I was actually just thinking if there's a swell there and a steel plate across there would help. I can't drive my car, I can't even take my car home, I have to, had to get ready to get a truck, so I can get across the wash. But like I said, it's, they, it'd be nice to get them some relief. Now farther down, there's another culvert that actually crosses the road, so it's just that one spot, it comes on the railroad track and stops.
What about the broken one you told me today? The broken?
Well, they, they fixed that.
They did fix it?
Yeah, that's fixed, when they, when the peeper down there putting the C-wall in.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay, does anybody else have any new information on this? We're gonna get into it.
You know, something else, yeah, right, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to share tonight?
I have a slightly different one.
Okay, you'll need to come up to the podium and share your name and your address.
I'm Bob Perkins, I live at forty-three oh-seven Commerce Drive, I've been here about twenty-eight years. And I have water coming out of my sump pump, had a small crock pot for a sump pump, originally it was built in the forties, and you could never keep your sump pump working. So I dug it out, put a regular one in, in the concrete. Well, it must have hit the spring or something. And I know it's legal to pump the water from your sump pump to your yard. If you drive down Hammer's Drive, the water's running down the street, it's coming out of my basement because of, I hit a spring. And I've had city inspectors out there, one they inspect my rental, and they said, "Whoa, send somebody out." And I had another guy come out there, "Well, we'll send some city engineers to talk to you." Nobody's ever come and talked to me about it. I have an option, I could pump it back into another well, but I don't want to pollute the water table. So, you know, I'd just like to have somebody come out and talk to me. So that's, that's my deal.
Okay, you'll get that as well.
Thanks for giving me the time. My name is Steve Morris, I live at forty-thirty-five Commerce Drive. And as he was talking about the new houses that were built up there, so that water went to the north before they built those new houses, now that water comes down to the south. So I live below where those new houses were built, so we're constantly getting more water coming down. So it's not our water, it's their water coming through our property. So as you say, we're the low part of the, the system, but we're getting somebody else's water, and it's not being controlled. So if it could be all addressed in that, in that sit-down meeting, that'd be fine with me.
Okay, yeah, let us, let us look into this, and we'll get some answers back to you.
The city has paid for every single one of those people, they pay nine bucks a month-
We understand that.
We understand it.
For years.
We understand that.
And they're back from the thirties, and they've never done nothing.
Give us some time to work, give us some time to look into this, Mr. Newquist.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for bringing up-
All right, thanks for coming.
Anyone else for Citizens Forum?
I reckon none.
Okay, move on to Mayor, City Council, City Manager reports. City Council, Jim?
At this time, Your Honor.
Devin?
Nothing this time.
Russ?
F and A had a meeting, and we discussed a few items. One, got an update on the RecPlex, the financial update. The project is a forty-two million dollar project, and approximately eleven and a half million have come from private sources, two million has been awarded in grants, so I wanted to note that. I know there are a lot of people, including our city manager, Tom Haddon, that are really working hard to raise private dollars for the RecPlex, and they've done a tremendous job on that. The RecPlex is, the anticipation of the completion of the project is gonna be September twenty-twenty still, so it's moving forward. Also on the agenda, we had the lobbyist service agreement. We will be approving that tonight. It's a slight increase of eight percent compared to what we were paying last year, thought that was fairly reasonable. We went over budget amendment number one, which is also on the agenda tonight. So forty-nine million dollars worth of CIP projects were carried forward from the previous fiscal year, which is the, the bulk of the, of the budget amendment. Also, in this budget amendment, will be reflected the lost money in the hiring of additional public safety officials. And that is about it. That's it for my report.
Renee?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have just a couple of things. I, first of all, like to start by congratulating Chief Lou and his team for a very befitting memorial that occurred yesterday. We attended that with Councilman Sandegar and the mayor, and it was a befitting tribute to the firefighters that pay the ultimate sacrifice to keep all of us safe. So congratulations, and thank you, Chief Lou, for the heartfelt messages that were just given yesterday's ceremony. And then last, Councilman Trumbull and I attended a Public Safety Committee meeting, and we just talked about some upcoming kinds of issues, and I think everyone knows that we've alerted that the Vice President will be here visiting tomorrow, and our folks will be there in full force, doing what they do to protect a sitting Vice President. And just for interest of full transparency, it was, you know, discussed that, you know, that cost of that security, or bill, is, you know, on the taxpayers. But we are doing what we are supposed to do, and the police force will always do a great job, but that cost and that extra resource that's needed to do what's required is borne on the cost of our taxpayers here. And then lastly, I attended the West Des Moines Library Meeting, and there's gonna be a lot of things going on at the library, my favorite place to hang out from time to time. But the library will be closed for some renovation, it's gonna be closed to the public, October the fourteenth through the twenty-sixth. They are going through some massive renovation, long overdue far as I'm concerned, and they are entitled, this renovation is gonna be writing a new chapter. It's like editing a novel, renovation takes time. And so the library will repurpose the former coffee shop into a dedicated young adult space, update the public furnishings, and replace worn carpet and paint throughout the building, and I'm just most excited about that. As we all know, the library is a gathering place for lots of folks, our circulation is up, visits to our library is up, and we need to have state-of-the-art library facilities. And it's a true asset in this city, and the Friends of the Foundation is donating three-hundred thousand dollars towards the creation of the new young adult space and the furnishing, and then some of it is also paying through the general fund and the lost sales tax and CIP budget funds. So Darryl is managing that well, and in his team, and just lots of moving parts, lot of packing, so if you and your family go to the library, be patient, understand that when it's all said and done, you'll be pleased and excited about the new library. So I wanted to share that from some discussions that occurred at our last meeting. That concludes my report. Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, Tom.
I'll report, Your Honor.
I guess, when I date last, I'll say, last Sunday night, we had our Sunday Supper fundraiser for Human Services, which I understood was sold out, and I think if I remember your email right, it raised fifty thousand dollars for Human Services, so, yeah, great event, and we appreciate Fleming's with helping for that, and, and, like I said, I think someone told me it was sold out this year. Item four, consent agenda, any item that any council member wants to pull? Otherwise, I take a motion for all of them.
Debrief.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Item five, old business, there's one item. Five A, vacation of a portion of Boonville Road right away, city initiated, it's an ordinance for the second, third reading, a final adoption, there are no changes from the third reading.
Move consideration to the second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Four yes, an ordinance to the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, vacating a portion of the Boonville Road right away.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Move waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Four yes.
All right, item six, public hearings, we have a number of them tonight. Six A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the preserve generally south of Raccoon River adjacent to the future extension of Southwest Grand Perry Parkway. amend the Conference of Plan Land Use Map to designate single-family, medium-density residential and agricultural slash open space land use, and establish the preserved plan unit development and agricultural open space zoning initiated by Raccoon River Land Company, LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
September eighteenth, twenty nineteen, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
The Plan and Zoning Commissioned by a vote of four yes, with two abstaining and one absent, adopted resolutions recommending approval of the Comp Plan Amendment and PUD. And there was also one correspondence that was received and included with the council communication.
Okay. Now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on item six A. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have a resolution and two ordinances, which we have to take separately, and the council communication and the states indicates that there's no outstanding issues. So the first item is a resolution to approve the Conference of Plan Amendment.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Four yes.
All right, the second item is an ordinance for the first reading on the zoning change.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second.
Questions on the zoning change or comments? Okay, please vote.
Four yes, an ordinance amending the official zoning map and the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, twenty nineteen by amending Title IX zoning, Chapter Four zoning districts and map.
Move approval of the first reading?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Okay, the third item is an ordinance for the first reading on the PUD.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second.
Questions on the PUD? Okay, please vote.
Four yes, an ordinance amending the official zoning map and the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, twenty nineteen by amending Title IX zoning, Chapter Nine, planning unit development district pertaining to PUD district regulations and guidelines.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Item six B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Jordan West, southwest corner of EP True Parkway and Jordan Creek Parkway, amend the specific plan ordinance by rezoning the southern portion of the PUD Parcel Seven from support commercial to regional commercial, and to allow for construction of an indoor family entertainment venue initiated by Ryan Companies U.S. Inc. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
September eighteenth, twenty nineteen, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
The Plan and Zoning Commissioned by a vote of six yes, one was absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the zone change specific plan.
And now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on item six B. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is an ordinance for the first reading, there's no outstanding issues, and I know there's been some discussion about these uses in general in the city, but it's very specific that this is only gonna apply to this Parcel Nine for purposes of the action tonight, so we're not expanding the notices yet to anywhere other in the city, we'll have to talk about that, but it's very specific to this location.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Four yes, an ordinance amending the official zoning map and the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, twenty nineteen, and ordinance number seventeen forty-nine and
Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, and ordinance number 1749 and 2097, amending Title IX zoning, Chapter IX, planning unit development district pertaining to PUD district regulations and guidelines.
Move approval. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Item 6C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the amendment to city code Title IX zoning, Chapter VI, commercial office and industrial zoning district, Section 5, use codes, modify certain regulations as they pertain to physical fitness facilities initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
September 18th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
The Plan and Zoning Commissioned by a vote of six yes, one was absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the ordinance amendment.
Now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on Item 6C. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is an ordinance for the first reading, there's no outstanding issues.
Move consideration, the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Four yes. An ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by amending Title IX zoning, Chapter VI, commercial office and industrial zoning district, Section VI, use codes, to modify certain regulations as they pertain to physical fitness facilities.
Move approval, the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
6D, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the amendment to city code Title IX zoning, Chapter VII, setback and bulk density regulations. Update regulations pertaining to rear yard setback requirements for accessory structures and residential zoning districts initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
September 17th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
The Plan and Zoning Commissioned by a vote of six yes, one was absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the ordinance amendment.
Right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on Item 6D. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, this is an ordinance for the first reading, there's no outstanding issues.
Move consideration, the first.
Second.
Questions or comments?
If I'm clear, we're changing, the concern is that an open-air deck would become a enclosed deck with a roof, is that what Liz Lynn? And so, we're changing the requirements for an open-air deck now to be the same as what they would be, were they a roof on the deck? Is that what I'm? Run me through this.
Lynn Tuit, Director of Development Services. The trend nowadays is to put a covered deck on the back of your house. A lot of times, they start out open-air. Eventually, over time, they, people decide that they are going to enclose them and make them part of the house, either a three-season or a four-season room. Typically, you have a principal structure setback, which is the main body of the house, and then you have accessories.
That's how far.
A lot of times, in the backyard, it'll be 35 feet.
All right.
So, when this deck gets enclosed, it becomes part of that principal structure. It's the same massing as the main part of the house.
Yeah.
That's what initially we were trying to address, is to make sure that all of that stayed 35 feet from the rear yard.
Yeah.
What we found out after we adopted that ordinance, and this is really just reverting back to what we had before, was a lot of the builders, they count on being able to go up to that 20-foot mark when they're marketing and building these homes. We really have never gotten the complaints about these, the mass of the buildings getting too tight to the rear yards, you still have 20-foot minimum. So, it's really just to revert back to what we had before.
So, we're giving a little more flexibility in terms of that back structure being close to the back, which is what I, you know.
You're getting a little more buildable area of your house, of your lot, is what it amounts to.
Good, really good.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right, please vote.
Four yes. An ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by amending Title IX zoning, Chapter VII, setback and bulk density regulations, to update regulations pertaining to rear yard setback requirements for accessory structures and residential zoning districts.
Move approval, the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Item 6E, the council's being asked to continue this to the October 21st council agenda.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
6F, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider corrected Michael's Landing Plat 1 Outlet C, termination of permanent storm sewer easement, and approval and acceptance of conveyance of property interest initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
September 28th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on Item 6F. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's a resolution to approve termination of the permanent storm sewer easement and approval and acceptance of property interest, because it's no longer needed.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Four yes.
Item 6G, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider conveyance of permanent public utility easement to Mid-American Energy Company, northeast corner of South 81st Street and Mill Civic Parkway, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
September 28th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on Item 6G. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is a resolution to approve the conveyance and easement, simply relocating the existing transformer and switchgear to a different spot.
Move approval, the conveyance and easement.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Four yes.
6H, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the 2019-2020 fiscal year operating in a capital budget, amendment number one, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
September 27th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on Item 6H. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's a resolution to approve budget amendment number one, and this came through Finance and Administration Council Subcommittee.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Four yes.
6I, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the Fiber Conduit Interconnect Project Purple Route and Duck Bank initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
September 27th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on Item 6I. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Four yes.
Item 6J, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider South 85th Street Cascade Avenue to Mill Civic Parkway, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
September 27th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on Item 6J. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, questions or comments?
Glad to see that the bid came in a lot lower than the engineer estimate.
Be nice to get this segment of 85th Street paved. Okay, please vote.
Four yes.
6K, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the library interior improvements initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
September 27th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on Item 6K. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together. Renee reported on this, and we did get five bids, and it was significantly under what the original estimate was, so this is all good, Daryl.
Yeah. So, move.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Item 6L, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider city entrance enhancements, Phase 1B, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
September 27th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on Item 6L. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have a resolution to approve the plans and specifications, a motion to receive and file a report of bids, and then there's a resolution recommending that we reject the bids and rebid it later this fall with an extended completion date. I think based on the information that staff was provided by some of the bidders, it was a pretty tight completion date, which may have driven the bids up. So, we can take the resolution, two resolutions and motion together.
A move.
Second.
Any other questions or comments on 6L? All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Item 7, new business, 7A, Wood Springs Suite, 7255 Lake Drive, approval of site plan to develop a four-story, 81-room hotel, VKB management. It's a resolution to approve the site plan, there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval, the site plan.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Four yes.
7B, excess property related to installation of storm sewer near First Street and Grand Avenue, plat a survey to create two parcels for transfer of ownership. City initiated, it's a resolution to approve and release of two plats of survey, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
A second? Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Four yes.
7C, excess property related to realignment of Mill Civic Parkway and South 88th Street, plat a survey to create two parcels for transfer of ownership, city initiated. This is a resolution for approving a release of two plats of survey, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
For a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Item 7D, Scotty's Pub 1, LLC, doing business at Scotty's Pub and Grub, 3781 EP True Parkway, Class LC liquor license with Sunday sales and outdoor service privileges, renewal. The motion is to deny the liquor license application. This was continued from the last City Council agenda, and you have a pretty comprehensive summary in the communications to why staff's recommending that the liquor license be denied.
Move denial.
Is there a second? It looks like it came through, it doesn't say the committee, but it's got to be Public Safety, right, Chief?
Yes.
Okay, so the Public Safety Subcommittee of the council also recommends denial of the permit, so I need a second on that, 7D.
Second.
All right, please vote.
I just want to make sure that this is included in the record, that's what you're relying on, correct? The staff report of the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, please vote on 7D.
Four yes.
Okay, item eight, there's one item. 8A, for receive, file, and or refer Lori Laverado's resignation from the Civil Service Commission. She's been a great member of that committee, she's moved out of West Des Moines. I believe maybe when she joined that, she was on the Des Moines Police Department at the time. So, we'll miss Lori, we congratulated her on her new home, and be happy to take her back if she doesn't like where she's living.
I'm stuck in there.
Other, number nine, other matters, are there any other matters that any council member wants to raise tonight?
I did have, I did have one other thing. I forgot to mention in my report that one of our former West Des Moines citizens of the year, Mark Hildenbrand, I think we know, who has been very instrumental in a lot of the equity work that's been going on in West Des Moines, and has led monthly discussions out of what was occurring at Valley. He is moving to Canada to take on a phenomenal job in the area of social work, and so, there was a reception for him last night, a number of people came out to thank him, and I think his last meeting on the Human Rights Commission will be Thursday. But I just want to go on record of thanking Mark for the service that he has given to West Des Moines, being a man that really, truly has honored just humanity and bringing people from diverse backgrounds together to talk and to dialogue. West Des Moines is losing a phenomenal citizen, so let the record show that we appreciate all the work that Mark Hildenbrand has done for this great city.
Yep.
I can't say it any better than Renee just did, I would just second exactly what she said. She and I went to a number of those meetings, and Mark is just an excellent guy with a big heart, could bring a lot of people together, and we had a lot of great conversations, so he will be very sorely missed.
And we support it, I know Mark's look at other opportunities, and we've sent letters of recommendation on his behalf, so I know he appreciates our support for him looking for some other career opportunities. Did you want to address the council on something?
Yeah, I went to the restroom, so on Scotty's Pub and Grill.
Okay.
So, I'm just here to represent him, because of the unfortunate happen, matter.
Okay, so give us your name and your address.
My name is Mindy West.
Keep in mind that it was already voted not to renew the license.
Huh.
So, I said we, did you leave the meeting before we voted?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I went to the restroom.
Okay, well, share your name and your address, and we'll make sure your comments.
My name is Mindy.
Proceed the vote, go ahead.
Mindy West. My address is 1624 22nd Street, Des Moines, Iowa. And then, I didn't hear what you guys wanted to say, like, I just, all these things that happened with Scott and all these matters, it just, it just wasn't fair that he didn't get to have an attorney with him today. We tried to get one, and because of the past, what just happened a week ago is why what just happened. And I just, like, what's the questions?
Well, Mindy, did you read this, did you read the staff report on why the staff?
No, I was kind of just stuck, I wasn't going to do any of this.
Okay, so I'm not going to read it to you, but there's a whole list of things in there that would suggest that he doesn't qualify for the renewal of his liquor license.
Can we get her a copy of that?
Sure.
Okay, we'll get one.
Like, I have everything that he wrote down, but this wasn't, like, I just was told to stand up for him. Sorry, I'm just really nervous.
No problem, relax, you're fine.
No worries.
We'll get you a copy of his, of the staff report. Thank you, Jessica.
I might, if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Dick.
Ma'am, you have to be of good moral character, and they define good moral character as obeying the laws and being of good financial standing. And as you can see, Mr. Thomas's record indicates that he was arrested for OWI in 2013, or 2014, he had an assault of a person that was reduced to disorderly conduct. In 2014, he was charged with serving an underage minor that, it might have been an employee, but that's, although there was a judgment, he hasn't paid that. He was charged with disorderly conduct, actually, it involved an assault at his place of business in July.
Well, she's the one that called the cops that night.
Okay, but, but to that point, in July of 2018, he was charged with disorderly, it was an assault, actually, the police charged him with disorderly conduct. That's pending, I think he's going to go to court next Thursday, and I don't know if that's why he was arrested, or he was also arrested for something else, but he failed to disclose that on the application, which goes to the heart of good moral character.
And which goes right back to his lawyer, why his lawyer.
Pardon?
His lawyer failed to put that on the report, because it had nothing to do with alcohol or a felony.
But it says, are there any charges pending, or have you been convicted? And he failed to disclose that, so although he might not have construed that to be alcohol-related...
And he's in contact with his lawyer about that, because that was not his fault. And then, everything else prior, why was he granted a liquor license for two different places? And then, now you guys are taking it away because of his past.
Just in the last year, there's been eight police calls to, four of them to his place of business, and four other ones where he was involved in an altercation, he wasn't charged, but there were police calls. All of those involve violence, or harassment, or some sort of assault, so that also goes to his behavior. He was, he failed to obey, although I don't know if it's in here, it might be, he failed to abide by an administrative search warrant that the ABD was doing on his records. He didn't comply with that, so that goes to good moral character. He's been charged, I believe, with operating without owner's consent for an accident, which is the reason that he couldn't come to this hearing the last two weeks. So, that's a pending charge that, although it's not considered by the council, that goes to his good moral character. So, there's numerous things about Mr. Thomas that have occurred both prior to his last license issuance, as well as in the last year, that the council, based upon what they've read, indicate that he has not good moral character and therefore doesn't qualify.
Dick, doesn't it also indicate in the staff report that he still owes for employee wages?
Right, and that is financial standing. He's got three judgments against him for employee wages that he hasn't paid. He's got two, he's got a federal tax lien that judgment against him for $38,000. He's got a civil fraud conviction for $4,000, or excuse me, $2,400. And then he's got four pending wage violations that are being investigated. So with that kind of record, it's difficult to say that he's of good moral character.
Yeah. Seeing, yeah, and those people all have internal things. I mean, it's really sad that it's a bar business and stuff has to happen like this, but...
There is an appeal process. If you'd like to appeal to ABD.
Oh, he's going to. Like, he has all this down. And the four calls, it was an ex-girlfriend, and she was the one that had to serve the minor. And she's eliminated and out of his life. So, and he's rebuilt the staff and everything, so he's really trying to do better. He really wanted to have a restaurant right beside the Valley School, to have a family[1697.23]